Roll call, please. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protonam?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here.
We move to item three in the invocation. Pastor Kelly Kelty from Community of Christ will provide the invocation. Thank you, Pastor.
Oh, our divine Creator. We thank You that You have created this universe for us, where we grow and expand our knowledges. We thank You for this world that You have created, where we can live free to build a better world around us. We thank You for this state and this community, where we can work together, one on one, to indeed to build a better community. May we, dear Creator, do this by working together in harmony, one with another, the staff and all those gathered, by indeed look to the future for a better future, to build a better world, both here and afar, is what we ask. Amen.
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 Thank you. Scott, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any ceremonial matters this evening. Point to open up public comments that are not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here? Nope. Okay. Close public comments. Move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there anyone who wants to speak on this? There is anyone? All right. It's been moved and seconded. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protonam?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes.
Item eight, public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2024. The city council is requested to consider their recommendation from the Audit Standing Committee to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2024. We have our Administrative Services Director.
I'll start off, Mayor.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. I almost said Mayor Chavez.
We heard it. We heard it.
We heard it. All right. Strike one.
It's okay. I sat on William's chair.
I get to strike three. Thank you, Mayor Sternquist and members of the council. We are proud to bring before you the annual comprehensive financial annual report. Today, we're going to bring this forward to you with a little bit more of a presentation than we've had. And thank you first to the Audit Committee of Councilmembers Yu and Councilmember Chavez, who work with the auditors. Just as a reminder, the auditors actually work for the city council. They work for the governing body. We as staff assist the auditors in compiling the financial statements, testing the internal controls of the city. And we'll talk about one finding. There's always places to improve, so we'll talk about one finding. But I want to talk to you about what the presentation shows. This was an extraordinary year, and why? We're going to explain why it was an extraordinary year. And it was for two key reasons that I'll get to in a few moments. But you do have a clean audit that's in front of you, an unmodified opinion by the auditors. The auditors have spoken to both Councilmember Yu and Councilmember Chavez about it. The two extraordinary things that made this year a one-time, once-in-a-career type of event in terms of what's happening is two things. One, we are starting to realize the expenses from ARPA. If you recall, last year, the prior Administrative Services Director had recommended that you use ARPA funding for law enforcement services. So what that did was remove the expense of law enforcement from the general fund temporarily for this fiscal year of '23-'24, and we'll include some of that for '24-'25. So what you did is you removed an expense, but you added a revenue one time. So what that did was inflated, and you'll see it, it inflated what your fund balance is. The other extraordinary thing that happened, as you all know, and even minus the financial turmoil that may be going on right now, interest rates spiked significantly over the course of, starting in late 2023 into '24. What that meant for us as a city, you may recall in our prior financial annual reports, we actually showed a loss in our investment portfolio from a mark-to-market, meaning if we had to sell all of our treasuries and all of our financial instruments at that time, we would have seen a loss. Well, many of those came to maturity over the course of fiscal year '23-'24. So not only did we gain the interest, we also gained the mark-to-market value of that increasing to the tune of almost $2 million. So we had two events that are not, in my 20-plus-year career, have never happened at the same time, where we have a super infusion of cash and you have an accelerated yield on what usually would be a 1% to 2% yield you'd get because we are restricted by the government code on how we can invest our funds. Right now, our money is yielding in life, which is the state pool, a little over 4.2% as of today, one of the most extraordinary yields any local government has seen in 20 years. So those are the two events that really pushed up our revenues, but also increased our fund balance. What you did as the council is, and what you'll see in not this year's act for, but next year's act for, you will, excuse me, thank you, the act for, you will see a significant drawdown in that fund balance because you've made some strategic decisions on investment. The new playgrounds and the roof and other investments that we've made over the last 18 months. So what this represents is all of that expense is not fully realized yet, but will be realized in the future. So a long way to say, the money that you're going to see in the fund balance, that is not the money you're going to see a year from now. You're going to see that significantly drawn down on, but drawn down for a good reason. The reason is because of the investment that you're making back into the community for the Civic Center, City Hall, and also, too, you have some other projects that are coming on as well. You have Serena Park and you have the Chambersite as well. So those will be coming down. So while we have good news, we wanted to put it into some context for you so there's not a sense that we have essentially more money than we really do as this reports to the day. That money has been obligated and will continue to be obligated going forward with the projects that you've directed us to do, authorized us to do, and are planning for in the future. So with that, Mayor, if it's okay, if I can turn it over to Alex Kung, our Admin Services Director and City Treasurer.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. And thank you, Mr. Cook, for summarizing that for me. So we're going to be presenting, or I'm going to be presenting, the act for tonight for fiscal year '23-'24. So I'm pleased to report that our auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, issued an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit. This means our financial statements were presented fairly and in conformance with the accounting principles and reporting requirements set by Gatsby. Additionally, the city received a clean audit for our single audit of federal grant funds, specifically the ARPA funds. So when we expend more than $750,000 a year, we have to do a single audit. And basically, it just means that Clifton Larson Allen, our auditor, also just tested to make sure we were in compliance there. And we had a clean bill of health there, so that was good. Lastly, I'm happy to announce, we were also awarded for our fiscal year '22-'23 audit the GFOA Award of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. The city has received this award for over 10 years now. It might be more, but I don't have all the plaques, so it could be more than that. Okay, so moving on, on another note, as Mr. Cook mentioned, I wanted to bring it to the council's attention, that we had a finding regarding the recording of outstanding checks at fiscal year end. And this is really specifically at fiscal year end. This is an issue that specifically deals with the timing of when the checks go out at fiscal year end and whether it's recorded as cash or as an accounts payable. Unfortunately, due to the retirement of the former Administrative Services Director, there was some kind of miscommunication with staff regarding the procedures to address this issue and who was supposed to record it and so forth. But this year, I want to assure the council, the mayor and the council, that I'll be addressing this issue early. Staff, I've already spoken to staff, they have a better understanding now. The issue was fixed in the fiscal year '23-'24 audit, but the auditors had to bring it to your attention and also to everybody's attention. And that's fair. That's what we need to make sure we do is fix these issues. Lastly, I wanted to note that our new financial software that we're trying to implement that would come online hopefully fiscal, well, around July 1st of 2026, there should be some automated processes that would help with these year-end closings that would also address this issue. And please stop me if there's any questions you might have.
Alex, is this new software? How new is it? And did you have it where you worked previously?
I did not. This is a newer version. So as I was describing to staff, this is like buying a Honda, and we had the Civic, and now we're upgrading to the Accord. While there's similarities of how you drive this car, where things may be as far as where the switch for the AC control or the radio control, it's a little bit different. So there's some nuances to it that I'm getting up to speed on. But just like any other car out there, I've driven it before, I know how it works. It's just an implementation process that takes some time, and I'll be going through that this entire year of doing that.
Will you have Brian participate? I know he loves numbers.
I appreciate that confidence in me, but I'll have familiarity with it and understanding the types of reports. But from a segregation of duties standpoint, it's important for Mr. Kung and I to have different access, or me not having the access at all in many cases, to certain things. So, but to your point, Mayor, yes, I'm excited about it, too, because it'll be able to run some reports that, you know, I get the cobwebs out of my head about old finance days. But also, too, for staff, what that will do is we'll be able to generate like simple expense reports and other things, which right now we have to do manually. And that's what this finding reflected, is we have to do a lot of the mechanics in the general ledger when we put in what are called journal entries. We have to do them physically. And a lot of this, from a report-writing standpoint, and the journal entries are still inputted. But from a reporting standpoint, for example, Mr. Reemers, his Community Development Director, will be able to pull up his CDPG program a little bit simpler and say, okay, you know, what loans have gone out, what's still payable, what do I have as of this moment in time? Fortunately, we can't do that in the system today. We actually have to calculate some of those reports rather than being generated. So that's why you will not see this finding. Alex will make sure we'll not see this finding for '25, but you will definitely never see this finding again with our updated system.
And staff will participate, just to let you know. I want them to try to break it because I want to make sure that it's not breakable, right? Once we go live. So there will be a testing, and we'll definitely have a lot of staff involved in that testing.
Mayor, I have a question. So in general, is the role of the auditor to also provide or recommend solutions? Or is the solution simply up to us to determine what's the best fix?
No, it's definitely the auditors do provide solutions. There's uniqueness to every financial software and how it works. As I mentioned, this is an older model, and so the automation of that process just doesn't happen in the software, or at least from what I'm aware of. And so really, they've given us recommendations of how to do it for the coming fiscal year, and so we have a better understanding. I think it just wasn't communicated as far as who exactly was supposed to do that. I think there was some miscommunication about that. And unfortunately, I wasn't here at that time, and it's just when we had to, when, they found it. They found the error, and that's what their job is supposed to do, and they as being the auditors. And they brought it to our attention, and then we quickly fixed it. So going forward, you know, hopefully, this won't happen again. It really comes down to the actual timing of when the checks go into the mail, right? And so this is a very, I won't say unique, but a precise timing. Literally, if we had it because it was 4th of July, we couldn't take it to the post office, it's got to be recorded as a payable rather than cash going out. So it's just a very timing-driven issue that it just wasn't clear enough for staff of, okay, this is what happened, this is what we need to do. But going forward, they now understand.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Okay, so there's a lot going on this page, but I want to turn your attention to the general fund and specifically the fund balance. And as we know, the general fund is the city's main operating account. And last fiscal year, we finished the year with an extraordinary, extraordinary positive fund balance of $9.6 million, as Mr. Cook was alluding to. While the amount is very positive, and as Mr. Cook said, we wanted to remind council that these are primarily due to one-time use of ARPA funds for public safety. And this is in the tune of roughly about $5.2 million that the ARPA funds paid for the public safety funds, or the public safety expenditures. In addition, bond and life investments have been generating historic yields and also an increase to our market value. And remind you, this is from '23-'24. And this totaled investments of roughly $2.3 million. That's how much it was generating. And lastly, there's one additional thing that was a one-time, was the $750,000 exchange of Prop A funds that we had at that time. I think we had $1 million, and we exchanged it for 750 in general funds. So kind of moving into fiscal year '24-'25, our current fiscal year, I want to note that we're going to be using up those one-time ARPA funds this fiscal year, which we basically have as of today's date. And that's roughly in a tune of $2.4 million. And therefore, in the current fiscal year and in fiscal year '25-'26, now I'm talking a little bit into our future, our public safety expenditures in the general fund will kind of return to its normal costs. So we're going to see that our fund balance will start to not be as high, right? And in fiscal year '24-'25, our current fiscal year, we're going to draw down, as Mr. Cook mentioned, from that $36 million that you see up there to pay for our Live Oak Park, which is roughly about $3.2 million, in addition to the City Hall roof project, which is about $3.2 million. So those costs are going to hit our books in the current fiscal year. And so it's going to really draw down on that $36 million you see there, okay? Is there any questions?
Does any mayor have any questions?
Sure.
Given the recent volatility of the federal side, does that had an impact so far this year on our bonds or any of our investments?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It has, but I would say, so the volatility in the market, it plays a different role on bond yields. As Mr. Cook says, it's about 4.2 right now. It's been roughly about 4%, and now people are looking also for places to put their money, like safe places. So that's where the bond market has been. Now, with everything in the last two weeks that's gone on, things have, you know, been just moving around quite a bit. But right now, this last fiscal year, from July 1st of 2024 to up to today, it's been, we've had a good year as far as with interest rate yields. I can't say for sure that the fair market value of these investments are going to stay positive. It fluctuates, it's very volatile. But with inflation that was happening these last few years, it's been a safe haven to put your money in life or in bonds.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Okay, so this is from a citywide perspective. From a citywide perspective, which includes not only the general fund, but also our special funds. And what I mean by special funds, those are our transportation funds, which are also inclusive of Prop A, Prop C, Measure M, Measure R, and also our lighting and landscape funds. We've had a positive net fund balance there, too. As I previously mentioned, and Mr. Cook has mentioned, a lot of this positive fund balance is due to the historic yields of our investment and money market, the use of the ARPA funds, and the exchange of the $750,000. And kind of less expenditures that we've been using as far as with our capital projects. It's more of a timing issue.
Do the Prop A funds come yearly?
Yes, they do.
So, and when do we receive those funding?
Just throughout the year, throughout the...
Oh, so that's broken up throughout the year?
Yes. And so, if I may interject, these funds like Prop A, Measure M, if we don't use it, it's considered almost a positive fund balance, right? The fund balance grows, right? So if we have more revenues coming in and we don't expend it, then the ending fund balance becomes greater.
Do you know, how much do we have in Prop A funds currently?
I don't have that with me off the top of my head, but I can get that. So I think what I would say is that in fiscal year '23-'24, we didn't finish some of our projects and so some of our capital projects that may be using some of these funds. And so for lighting and landscaping, I can tell you, for example, we have projects that are on the books, in the works, but it's just taking us a little bit more time to expend it. And so those expenditures you're going to see roll in, whether in '24, '25, or '25, '26.
Would it be smart for us to look at selling some of those Prop A funds now? Or would you recommend we didn't?
I wouldn't recommend that we sell funds because we get less on the dollar. So for example, those Prop A funds, it was $1 million, we only got 750 from the general fund. We have projects for them that would use them down, yeah. And this is really more about timing of when the expenditures hit our books. It's also about how long it takes to get a project done. I know here in Temple City, we're pretty good about expending our funds as soon as we get them. At my former city that I worked for, their projects took a little bit longer, and so their funds would build up a little bit longer, their capital project funds would build up a little bit longer. So that's, you know, entirely on a citywide scale, those are kind of the reasons why you're seeing a positive net, positive fund balance there. All right, and lastly, in conclusion, while the city is in a healthy financial position, kind of due to the volatility of our current financial climate, we need to be vigilant and closely monitor our primary sources of revenue. And what I'm speaking to is sales tax, property tax, and our building fees. These aren't really one-time revenue sources of revenue. These are our ongoing revenues, and these are our major sources of revenues. And they make a large percentage of our general fund. All current indications from our consultants like HDL, who oversees our sales tax and our property tax, they are seeing that '25-'26, the numbers are going to be a little bit flat or just modest growth. And I think with everything that we're currently seeing within the market right now, I don't really see a change in that projection. Lastly, the one-time revenue contributions of these strong investment yields that we've been seeing and also in the market values of our investments, these can quickly disappear just because the world changes, the world's economy is changing, and how business is being done. So, you know, we just have to be kind of vigilant and be careful and be, you know, there's also concerns of volatility as far as with inflation. And so expenditures are projected to go up higher in fiscal year '25-'26. The cost of business is just different now, and it is becoming more expensive. With that, that ends my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, let's move to council questions. Tom, William? I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we move to public comment. Do we have any members wishing to speak? Pastor?
Good job.
Oh. Okay, we're going to close public comment. And what do we need to do with this? Can't get to that page. Receive and file.
Okay.
Well, so do...
Any comments?
No question, we're going to make comments. So, Mayor, at appropriate time.
That's it?
You want to start the comments? So if I have no questions, I just want to make a comment. I think that what is the, first of all, it's very nice to have additional monies, like the ARPA funding that comes in and really allow the city to do a lot of reinvestment in the city. And like the city manager has said, that the current fund balance is going to drastically be reduced. But it was still very good that we have the ARPA funding that we're able to invest in our parks, in the city hall. So it's a very, I think it was a good decision that we made. And I also, it's very appreciative of the way we were able to use ARPA funding for public safety. You, so now the fund has been expanded, so I think we're pretty safe in keeping our share of the ARPA funding. So I'm very happy to see that. And then Councilmember Chavez and I were at the Audit Committee, and we actually did discuss that one item about the audit opinion of the, you know, year-end closing issues. And I think Councilmember Chavez would agree with me that the Audit Committee was satisfied that that issue had been dealt with.
Okay.
That's all.
Councilmember Chen?
No comment.
No comment?
Yeah, sure. No, every time we go through anything related to the financial status of the city, I always think about that state website that shows the list of cities that have the highest financial risk. Of course, we're never on there, right? But the reason I say that is because I'm just grateful that we're in the situation we're in. And I know it's due to a lot of variables, right? We have good staff who knows how to keep an eye out for things, how to manage things. And on the council end, I think we've been pretty consistent in how we've approached managing the finances of the city, at least for as long as, you know, the last 10, 15 years. So I appreciate the report and presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez, any comments?
Thank you. I just echo what Vince said. I just want to also express my gratitude to staff and CLA, our auditors, for their work and sometimes explaining things that seem kind of a little foreign sometimes to us. But to kind of follow up on you, not only are we not on the list... but, uh, we're also surprised when we, there's a finding. It's almost like we, like, we did something bad, but we didn't really do anything bad. But there's, I don't know that we've ever gone through without at least one finding. I, I think-
It's pretty rare not to get a finding.
Which is more of a, um, to teach us, I guess, or, or just to show that, you know, nobody's perfect. But, uh, if this is the worst it gets, then we're pretty good shape. So again, thank you to everybody who was involved in that and, uh, good job. And, um, yeah, so far it looks good, moving into the future. Thank you.
Not to bring this down in any ways, but with everything that is going on currently and talk of a recession, are there any conversations going on in the department thinking about, what would be the challenges should we go into recession? And how, how, how do we figure that all out?
I think you, if I, if I'm to kind of just generalize, one, we've always dealt with a good levels of decent surplus going in. So we're gonna have a little bit of, just as a preview, we're gonna have a less of a surplus going into fiscal year. As, as Alex pointed out, there's a moderation of growth that's happening in our major revenue streams. It's projected by HDL and what we've confirmed as well. I think we run, uh, it's gonna be a generalization, we want a lean operation. I, I don't, I, I would not come to you with anything leaner than what we have today. And again, part of it is, you know, if we do see a recession that's coming, one of the great things about our city is that we are a property tax-based city, meaning we are not cyclical. For example, there are neighboring cities to us that are dependent on car dealerships and other revenue sources from other cities that the cyclical part of the economy affects them in, in a couple quarters. For example, for us, for VLF and our property tax, we won't see that for about 18 months. So we'll, we have a glide path to kind of see when that recession is coming and adjust, where we don't have to drop on it, drop, drop very quickly, make an adjustment, come to you two meetings from now and say, oh boy, we're, recession is coming. So we have time to think, see what's coming ahead. So, and our, our financial forecasts have been pretty decent. I mean, we're, you know, it's a forecast, so it's not, it's exact. But the reset, if there was a recession that was to come forward, it would really have to have a significant impact on property values, because that's our primary revenue source. It would have to be a significant level of impact on properties. And that's why we don't grow very fast either, right? We don't grow super fast, but we're not gonna decline very fast. So that's just the, the general answer. So that's kind of the mindset that we as staff come to you as the policymakers and those who have the power of the purse to end the appropriations with that. So, and if, and if we had a catastrophic recession that really saw, we could see in two or three quarters, that we were gonna have to make some adjustments, we would come to you with a plan that says, here's maybe a temporary drawdown on reserves. Here's how we would try to replenish those over time, that kind of thing. But we're in a very fortunate position as a city. It's why we say we're on a strong financial foundation.
Right, because I, I believe that secondarily to the, um, property tax, we get a lot of pro, uh, taxes for restaurants.
Yes, we do.
And so we're heavily-
Yeah, so that's about a, a little over about a one point, a little over a million dollars a year in our sales tax side. So if we saw a 50% reduction in sales tax, we'd lose about a half a million bucks. So let's say, let's say, that's like worst case scenario, right? It's, it's, it's a really bad scenario. So we have enough buffer and also to our sales tax, uh, how it's distributed in terms of the industries, yes. So, uh, restaurants are incredibly important to our sales tax base, but they're diversified in such a way that again, there's not gonna, it, or to put it another way, we're not a one-horse town. We don't have a big Walmart. If that was the Walmart that was to go away tomorrow, there goes a huge percentage of our sales tax numbers. We're diversified in that way. But we are not, and, but we are still prone like any other, and we are, we still are vulnerable to any recessionary impacts that could hit. But again, it's gonna be a little bit farther down the line and historically has been down, even before I came here, the 2008 recession. Guys, that, that was, uh, uh, that was a fiscal cliff that hit. But again, it did not hit Temple City as dramat, as quickly as it did other agencies. And the other agency I was in, in Southgate before, we saw, within two quarters, we saw a dramatic drop in sales tax. So we're, we're fortunate not to be in that position.
That's good to know. Okay, thank you. All right, have a motion? Or do we even need to-
Yeah, I'll move to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2024, as contained in attachments A through E in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. May we have a roll call, please? Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Chen?
Yes.
Council member Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pearl Timman?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist? Yes. Okay. We move on to item B, 2024 General Plan and Housing Element Progress Reports. And, um, Mr. Cook, you'll introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, uh, and members of the council. This is another item we don't usually bring before you very often, but we thought there were, there are some, I'm going to describe them as successes, then they truly are. As you know, and as we have dealt with for the last several years, there have been significant challenges with what state laws have been passed and those impacts on land use, but also housing requirements through our RENA numbers. We had the most historic, oh, sorry, we had a historic allocation of housing units that the RENA numbers required of us, we're, we'll, we'll be careful about how we describe that, not required, were required to zone to build in the city's history. Uh, on top of that, if you think of many of the by right abilities that state law now requires, um, and other things, it has been a challenging time. But what I think the report that Mr. Boo is going to present to you today represents a success of planning. And it represents a success of how we have balanced development and growth in the city over time, dealing with the requirements that the state has on every city in California, but also us making a good faith effort to comply with housing laws. With the ever delicate balance of still trying to maintain the city's character. And I think we've had done that successfully. And I think some of what you're going to see in this report today represents that. So, um, with that, I will turn it over to our, uh, community development supervisor, Tony Boo.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening, mayor and, uh, members of the council. Just to provide you, you all with some brief background. So the annual progress reports, these are, um, compiled every year and they report the progress on, um, the city's general plan and the housing element, um, the progress of these documents. The reports are then reported and, um, presented to the planning commission and also city council. Um, and once approved, they're submitted to the governor's office of land use and climate innovation and also the Department of Housing and, um, Community Development. So the general plan, um, the state requires a city to monitor, um, the progress, which includes the housing element on different metrics. One is the housing, um, production within the city. This includes all, um, the at-market and also affordable housing products. And also, um, uh, to track the progress of the city's, um, programs and services related to housing. Economic growth is also a factor that we, um, monitor, related to the commercial and retail production within the city and also the, um, job creation. We also look at the infrastructure and services within the city. This would be in the form of parks, um, police, fire, and utilities. And also the, um, environmental impacts such as traffic, air quality, and greenhouse grass, um, gases. Um, another, um, big factor is the population trends. And, um, as of July of 2024, there was a reported 35,975 residents within Temple City.
Has that gone down in the past few years?
The, the last, um, update that I saw was in July, which was this number. Uh, I'm not sure what the, the number was prior to the, um, the current.
Yes, strangely, since about 2020, the city's population has been declining, even though we've been building more housing units. And that's the result of two things. One, our household sizes are getting a little bit smaller and the vacancy rate has been increasing a little bit. So we've seen a small decrease, uh, in population during that time.
Because I, I thought we were close to 38,000 not all that long ago.
Yeah, the, the other difficulty is, is that we, we only get really strong numbers every 10 years from the census. In, in those in-between years, the State Department of Finance tries to estimate the population, but often they underestimate because then when we find come 2030 or 2020 or 2010, they have to up their numbers to get up to the census number, so.
Thank you. Okay.
So just a, um, quick overview of our, um, 2024 progress. Um, the next few slides are gonna go over 12 major tasks and achievements, um, when it comes to the progress. And, um, in total, we had, uh, a 30, 387 planning applications submitted to the planning department. There was a total of 2,197 building permits issued and a total of 5,979 customers served at, um, city hall, um, just the community development department.
I found this on the web.
So for 2024, um, staff engaged and conducted, um, various code amendments. We updated the ordinance for the wireless telecommunications facilities and this was to align with FCC and state requirements. We also obtained a consultant to, um, update the city's subdivisions and ADU regulations, also to comply with the latest, um, state law. Staff also started, um, studying amendments, um, for our annual code amendments, with various, um, updates to different regulations, um, when it comes to minimum floor area, the state density bonus provisions, community care facilities, and so forth. We also, um, completed a constraints analysis, um, regarding SB 9. And, um, in 2024, staff also engaged in, um, a collaboration with SGB COG. And this was to focus a, on developing a comprehensive, uh, study, related to the crossroads specific plan, um, to help incentivize and attract, um, investment in the specific plan. And we also launched a program, um, for ADUs, um, the pre-approved ADU program, which, um, implemented prototypes, um, to help streamline the review and construction. When it comes to public works, um, staff, um, obtained a consultant, um, to engage in a study to provide, um, recommendations on potential development impact fees. And, um, the pavement rehab project, um, that project rehabilitated nearly, uh, 9.8 miles of the city's, um, streets. When it comes to mixed use and multifamily housing, um, the city published an RFP to obtain a consultant, um, to create object, objective design standards for mixed-use zones. And, um, the city also updated the thresholds of significance, um, under CEQA, the VMTs, the vehicle, uh, miles traveled. And this was to comply with, um, SCAG's new, um, regional transportation model. When it comes to housing assistance and public programs, staff continued to administer various assist, assistance programs, such as the, uh, rental assistance, housing rehab, handy worker grant program, and also the asbestos testing and cleanup program. And, uh, we also, um, continue to provide, um, services and public information to the public regarding anti-displacement of, um, households. This, uh, we guided residents to available resources and also provided information on protection against anti-displacement. So I'm gonna shift gears a little bit and, um, and onto our housing production within the city. This, um, bar table shows, um, the production within the span of the last, um, six years, starting in 2019. And as you can see from this, um, this graph, in 2024, um, there was a significant, um, increase in housing production. We had a total of 88, um, ADU units that were permitted, a total of 68 multifamily units, um, permitted, and 14 new single-family units. These are all brand-new units, um, that would contribute to the city's RENA numbers. This, um, table further breaks down our RENA, um, in diff, in the different required, um, income categories. The first column in green shows all of our, um, RENA, um, allocations that SCAG required the city to, um, upzone and, um, provide enough capacity for. We have 630 for very low income, uh, 350 for low income, uh, 369 for, um, moderate, and 837 for above moderate for a grand total of 201, wait, excuse me, 2,186, um, total units. So, um, to date, um, and with, um, what we're reporting for 2024, there's a total of, um, 421 units, um, for the current RENA cycle. And, um, just to remind, um, council, we're in our sixth cycle right now and it spans from 2021 through 2029. So we're, we're right in the middle of the sixth cycle and, um, we've already produced 421 units. Also, I wanted to note that, um, cities are required to zone for the capacity of RENA, but we're not required, um, to actually construct the units. This is, um, driven through the private, um, housing industry and market demand.
Mayor Sternquist, I have a question. Do you mind going back to the previous slide with the bar graph? So when, when I see the term, uh, I think in the report somewhere, it says 170 net units were added from, from a RENA perspective. So I, I understand an ADU being like a net gain. How, how is a single-family construction considered a, a net gain? Because, uh, I mean, I understand it as tearing it down and rebuilding it in kind. So is from RENA's perspective, as long as it's a new unit, it's considered adding to the RENA number?
Correct. So how the, um, reporting is done, if you demolish a unit and replace it, it doesn't count towards RENA.
Oh, it does not?
It does not count. So it has to be like a brand-new unit that is created.
Oh, I see. So if we look at this graph, um, single-family, the, the one colored black, so that 14 shown there, that does not necessarily contribute to the RENA?
It does.
Oh, it does.
So these numbers-
Or you tear down one, you build two.
Oh, got it, okay, okay.
Or there was an empty lot, you built some.
Got it, got it, okay.
Okay.
Makes sense, thank you.
So, um, the next table on this slide is, um, the city's sites inventory, which is included in our current, um, housing element. The state, um, and HCD requires the city to provide this sites inventory and it identifies potential sites, um, throughout the city to accommodate the, um, RENA, um, capacity. It also identifies potential multifamily sites throughout the city, um, to have higher-density, um, units. And, um, the state also requires us to monitor and update this inventory every year, based on our, um, current net gain. based on our current net gain of housing units. So after updating it with the numbers that we provided for 2024, we're now seeing a surplus of 414 over the required RENA. And and just to regurgitate that, the city identified more sites than and potential units that are required over the RENA. HCD recommends that cities provide between 15% to 30%, and the surplus that we have here is 414. That brings us to 18% of our RENA, so we do fall within HCD's recommendation.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
May I just add some clarification for myself, so I'm clear in my mind? So the 2,186 is what RENA is required?
Yes.
Right? And then 275 and 166 were the one that was actually built or proposed?
That was, so we deducted the from our total capacity. So this is, that would be the remaining capacity that we have for what we originally earmarked in our housing element for the production of ADUs, for entitlement proposed projects. So that would leave us with the remaining RENA after.
But what my question is, is 275 and 166 were built, right? Or were entitled? Your second role?
That's built in. That's both that's both of those things combined.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. So they were actually proposed projects, real projects?
Yes. So we would deduct that from the total RENA.
So that's how we arrive at 1735?
Correct.
Right. So and what the site inventory means? That these are sites that are still remaining to for housing production?
The sites inventory, yes. So we have that built-in capacity with our identified multifamily sites. And with that total, it gives us a surplus of 414 units.
And if I can, why that's important is that one of the two things that this has done is that your current zoning and your current, the manner in which there are three zones, there are two zones, and everything else is situated. And the good planning that was done with the general plan process and everything else means we do not have to look at other zones, say in R1, and essentially reconstitute those. We don't have to go back, and I don't want to use that, but upzone areas. We have enough give to show the state. And and this is complying with the state, and Scott or Tony, please correct me, where we're showing the state, not only do we have the capacity, but we have this surplus, so there's no reason for you to come in. And we we are demonstrating that we're complying with state law, but not only complying with state law, but we have some give that does that we have essentially planned the community in a way that allows for those units to be zoned without having to do anything midstream. So we don't have to go back and do a update to the zoning code to look at our R2 areas, our R1 areas, or how we've configured our R3s, or how we've configured our mixed-use R3s as well. That I think that's maybe where you're getting at, sir?
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to drive to that by asking the question, drive to that conclusion.
Yes.
That, you know, we're, I know we're not making comments, but in essence, I am, but that we've been able to produce more housing than we originally planned.
Yes.
And then we have a potential of exceeding the remaining RENA number by and by over 400 units.
Exactly. And we're showing, we can show that, we can show the HCD with a straight face that we're in compliance.
Oh.
Yes. And just to piggyback off of what Mr. Cook mentioned. So what we've identified in our sites inventory, sometimes sites don't get developed with the projected capacity that we identified. So that surplus also serves as the cushion to to ensure that we'll have enough capacity.
Follow-up question? So actually, two things. So on the notice site inventory, that's based on a maximum capacity for that particular zoning? For that site? Is it, it's a theoretical thing, right?
Yes. So, yeah, we so we go through the underdeveloped properties as part of the Housing Element Project. We look at what's a reasonable expectation for development on that site, not maximum development. So if a zone allowed, let's say, 30 units per acre, you might assume on most of the properties, you're going to hit 25 or 24 units per acre. And then so then you project that over a certain number of parcels, and then you come to come to some number. So when how, when HCD looks at our inventory, they want, they don't want to see like a new house that was just built, and then you're saying that's going to develop into a new apartment building. So they want to look at what, how deteriorated is the structure on the property? How old is it? What's the real likelihood that we're going to see development on that property? And then they want us to project a reasonable determination on build-out, not the maximum.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And and also, since we're on this graph, so when when we talk about units that are entitled, right? If we permit a multifamily unit that gives us a lot, it kind of bumps our numbers up. And then let's say it never gets built. Does that count against us in future reports? Or does that stay on? Is that still something we can say because we actually did give them the permit?
Sure. So how the reporting is done, it tracks it from entitlement all the way to final C of O. So it won't get counted until there's a building permit issued, and then the next year, if a certificate of occupancy is issued. So eventually, if it doesn't get built, it will get removed from the the reporting.
That question I had written down also. So, for example, the project on the Old Alpha Beta Site and the Cloverleaf. Are how are those included now with these numbers? And will they continue to be included until? How long do you get to be before there is no occupancy permit?
So, yeah, that, it gets a bit complicated. But generally, for the Alpha Beta Sites, since those permits have been vacated, they've expired, we can't get credit for those units. But the project at the Cloverleaf Site or Cloverleaf Site, they're in the permit process, their permits are still good. We can put them in the, we can put them in our report, and we get credit for them.
And for how long moving forward?
Until the permits expire. So as long as they continue to make progress on inspections, there's no issue. We'll, we'll have to take a look at some point when we do the next Housing Element update because that kind of resets everything back to zero. But, yeah, generally, that's the answer.
Okay.
Do they actually have the staff to send people out to these sites to look at them? Or do they just rely on what we tell them?
They pretty much rely on us to tell them. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So moving on, in preparation of this meeting tonight, we also canvassed our neighboring cities and and got data from them for the cities that have already submitted their reports. And Temple City is actually the leader in our region right now when it comes to housing production and meeting our total RENA goals. So we're allocated 2,186. We've reported 421, which is 19.3% of our total RENA allocation. The second city is the City of Almonte with 15.3%. And then City of Pasadena, Rosemead, San Gabriel, and Monterey Park.
No numbers for Arcadia?
They haven't released their report yet. It's due in April, but there has also been an extension because of the wildfires.
We did reach out. Tried. I figured you did.
Okay, surprise, 4.2 in Monterey Park.
And I also wanted to mention during the review process, when we do get applications for new housing and multifamily housing, our goal is to accommodate the new housing, but also ensure that it is, the design is thoughtfully integrated with the character neighborhoods and the existing fabric. This project is an example of one that the City Council approved in 2024. It's located off of Temple City Boulevard. It was the 18-unit multifamily project. It included two very low-income units and utilized a state density bonus provision. And when staff reviewed this project, we looked at the 360 design to ensure that it was of quality design and made sure that it provided the necessary step backs on the upper story so that it wouldn't be intrusive to the neighboring properties or the street front. And it also provided this generous courtyard to also help buffer any activity to neighboring properties.
Do you know where they are with this? We only have a submitted building plan check yet.
They're in the, they did submit, or they're going to submit for building plan check. They're currently under review right now.
That's great. Looking forward to it.
And looking forward, we also, in Attachment C of the staff report, we provided our 2025 work plan for community development. It includes a total of 36 tasks, 23 of which are housing-focused. Some of the key objectives are various code amendments. As I mentioned, the subdivisions, ADU amendments to align with the current state requirements, and also our annual code amendments to clean up the code for better readability and to be easier to navigate. We're also studying development impact fees, as I mentioned, and developing objective design standards for our mixed-use zones. Another project to City Hall is the counter renovation, and that's to update the public counter for ADA compliance and to make it more efficient for both the public and for staff. And also various, to continue our various housing projects that include rental assistance to provide that service for the public.
Mayor Stern, just a question. So the counter renovation, that hasn't started yet. That's still coming, right?
No, we still have to come to you, but, yeah, plans have been, plans have been developed, and we that's, we were waiting for the roof project to be done.
And I did notice going into City Hall this morning that there's a new check-in procedure, I guess? Or at least it was new to me, where you scan, you scanned something?
Yeah, we're trying to get customers to scan a QR code and and log themselves into the system. The receptionist is there if they need assistance and can log them in.
Is that working pretty well?
Yep. Yeah. Some people prefer it because then what was happening was we had.
Gets them in the line too, right away?
We get five or six people in the reception line, and if people are doing it themselves, they can get in line faster, as you said.
And that actually concludes my presentation. I did want to recommend that the City Council approve staff to submit these reports to LCI and HCD and also support the exemption under CEQA.
All right. Do we have council questions? Anyone?
Nothing further, no?
No, William?
Just one quick one. To, because we, we talk about ADU production, single-family, multifamily. And in the previous discussion, I recall that it was reported that we've had no projects being submitted through the SB9 subdivision. Is that, does that still remain true?
Yes. So we haven't received any applications.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Actually, because of that, I may ask one more. I thought SB9 is in limbo. Where are we statewide or not? SDB9 is still law for that people can follow?
It is still, it is still law. HCD, HCD has commented on our ordinance as well, which we will be coming back. We went to the Planning Commission, coming back, so it's.
I thought the law was being challenged.
It it is, but to date, to date, it has, it's been upheld. The challenges continue. As soon as we get something that we think we can rely on, we'll be back.
So basically, continue.
Continue for now and then, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, proceedings, okay.
Okay. I just one question. The, when you had the assistance programs, is the rental assistance program that was stated separate from family promise? It does rental assistance, or is that the same?
That's one and the same.
One and the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to open up public comment. No public comment, closed public comment. Final council questions? Anyone?
Comments, not questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Tom.
It seems to me that the ADU market is keeping us afloat. Fair to say?
Yes, yeah.
And in fact, I remember, was it an article we read somewhere that?
At the Times.
That that we're one of the top ones in the whole area? Or are we the top?
Yeah. I think, yeah, we're like number two or number three, I think. Yeah. So if you do it based on like a per capita or per housing unit, yes, we're very high. Number three in the in the LA County.
And do you foresee that continuing, or are we running out of ADU space?
I think we, we, we expect to see no decrease and just can kind of keep continuing. Our numbers are pretty stable.
Good. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember?
Yeah, I I do want to.
Mayor Protem.
Still getting used to. Yeah, just overall, I I do want to say I really appreciated Figure 2 showing a six-year comparison. I thought that was good to see that trend because we're, us on the council, we're not going to remember every year's housing production numbers for RENA. So thank you for that. I also appreciate the comparison with other cities because that also gives us a barometer of where we're at in relation to our neighbors. Not that we're competing with them, per se, but sometimes that comparison gives us a good benchmark. And like councilmember, you mentioned, you know, when you have the LA Times reporting on our ADU numbers, that's, that's also another kind of benchmark to to reference. So overall, yeah, I appreciate a lot of the work that goes into this as well as the many different programs and initiatives that have been mentioned. And I I know council is aware of a lot of activity going around this. And it just doesn't seem, at least from a state perspective or any, I guess, other agency perspective, that this type of issue or discussion is going to really normalize anytime soon. I think that's something that we as a city, which I'm actually proud of, is we've kind of faced that challenge head-on while maintaining what we believe is what Temple City should be like. So we've been able to kind of stand our ground, but also show to the state that, hey, look, you can't come after us when we're exceeding the target that that was set, right? And to me, it's, it's a little disingenuous for them to have any comment on on our ability to to meet the the housing production goals. So 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 thank you for for everyone who's who's a part of this. Really appreciate it.
That's it? Nope. That's it?
Comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Madam Mayor. You know, I I must be, I must say that I'm very pleased with the numbers, and thank you so much, Ms. Reamer and Mr. Boo, and and also City Manager and staff on really keeping up the housing production without compromising the quality of life in in Temple City. I think that balance is really hard to achieve. And I'm very pleased to see that we're not only 19% high, we're number one within the. the, at least the, our, our neighbors here in, in terms of housing production, but yet if you drive around town, you, I, I don't think people would be, would find that obvious that we're, we're the number one in housing production because you can still, people still comment how nice our city is, and so thank you for a job well done. And actually, not, I wasn't just looking at a 421 unit, I was looking at the, the other table that Mayor Protem referred to, the one that shows from 2019 till now. If I counted all those numbers, if I counted correctly, it's actually showing 559 units just in six years. That's a lot of housing units. And many of them are single-family, some are multifamily, some are ADU, very well dispersioned of different housing units. So I'm very impressed and, and congratulations and a great job.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Congratulations to you and the team. I mean, it really is a great job, and I think that one of the things that's going to keep that number moving up is the ADU catalog for building them. As soon as people start to become more familiar with that and find out from other people in their neighborhoods that this process was so easy and you can go in and pick out a, you know, a pre-approved design, I think, I mean, that's the beauty of that program. I think it's going to continue to help with building the ADUs in our city in a way that we want to see, right? So I think that's going to be, play a big part. So thank you very much. All right. Can I have a motion for this item?
Madam Mayor, may I move that the council received the 2024 general plan housing element progress report, find the annual report exam from CEQA, approve the annual reports and direct staff to file them with Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, ma'am?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Number, item 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist.
How's the stock market doing today?
Oh, wow. Don't make me depressed. So the, just one quick thing, this coming Saturday, April 19th, starting at 8:30 until about 11:30, will be our annual Easter egg hunt and pancake breakfast for the low, low bargain of $4. You get three pancakes, two sausages, and a drink. So enjoy. And throughout the day, starting around nine o'clock, it'll be spread out for age groups. We will put Councilmember Chavez in the appropriate age group for the Easter egg hunt.
What?
We will, we'll do that. And so it'll be, it'll be broken up between the age groups, and it's usually one of our biggest events of the year. It's completely packed, so. We will also have at the information booth, a community input table for the Chamber Park site as well.
For the what?
For the new Chamber, for the new park at the Chamber Commerce. Well, we're going to provide, we're going to allow the community to provide some initial feedback. We don't have the consultant on yet, but we'll have some initial feedback on what amenities and things that the community is looking for.
Are we going to have anybody there to answer any questions regarding the playground at Live Oak? Staff will be there.
Staff will be there. Mr. Matsumoto will be there.
There might be some since they're going to see it.
Yeah, so we'll be there.
Can't miss it.
Yeah. For, for the feedback at Sereno, oh, no, not Sereno, the Chamber, the Chamber site, is it a similar format to when we solicited feedback for?
We won't be using the stickers, we'll be using, we actually have a QR code that we'll have that they can fill out and with a QR code survey, but if people aren't comfortable with the QR code survey, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have cards and stuff that they can provide that feedback with as well.
Got it, thanks.
Are the tickets? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, this is only for the Chamber site. How about the Sereno park? That was done already?
No, no, we're going to, we're just going to target first one for the neighborhood first and then do something broader later as well. So we're still working on that one.
Are they selling the tickets the day of the event, or do you have to buy them prior?
You can buy them the day of, or you can go to Live Oak Park and pre-purchase.
Okay. All right. Is that it?
That's it, ma'am.
Okay. Item 12, update from our city attorney.
Nothing as exciting as pancakes. Just a reminder that the state budget is in its process, which generally means that it will be time for budget trailer bills, and we will all be watching intently to see what kind of impact those budget trailer bills will have on local government and bring any updates to you as soon as we hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
Well, our thunder was taken from us tonight. The audit committee, we don't really need to report since we get, we get the real thing tonight, so.
So just ditto.
We're, we're good on that. So I think we're good. I, I do have a, I have a couple of questions, though, if you don't mind, unless anybody has another report on a couple of the committees. The homeless plan standing committee, where are we at on that? I know that's Mayor Sternquist and I.
Yeah.
It was formed, that was formed back in 2021. But that was, I think Fernando was on that.
So what came out of that was family promise, was one of the things, but we should reconstitute that. We just recently got some of the feedback from our county partners on new measure. There are going to be some changes in that structure, so I appreciate the feedback that I've been getting on that, so we-
So maybe a future meeting coming up?
Yeah, we should come back to both of you with that.
I just like, because I hadn't heard anything on it, I thought, well-
No problem, sir. That's a good idea.
Meet or disband, bro.
No, no, I, I think it's, I think it's, it's still with the changes in the county measure, I think it's relevant to still meet, if you wouldn't mind.
And then whatever happened to our Live Oak Park playground signage? Where, where are we on that?
There was one-
I asked Adam, I forgot what Adam said. I think, have you guys met on that?
Well, the last time we met, we provided some feedback, and our understanding was that they were going to come back with revised-
So they're still going to come back.
Brian, for us?
Yeah, because that, that's a good point.
We're running out of time on that now, I mean.
Well, it's, it's, the footings are in place for where it is, so it's not, it won't, it won't hold up the project in any way, shape or form. But we need to come back.
Good. And just to, last thing, just to report out, the commissioner recruitment, Roxanna started today, I believe, right? The, the application period began today for the commissioner recruitment? Did, did it begin today? When did it begin?
Beginning of March.
Oh, it already began?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Closes the 30th.
Oh, closes the 30th, okay. And so we're accepting applications for that, and then we're also accepting applications for the youth committee, although it's not on the agenda, but we're-
When does that close?
I believe that closes when, end of the month also, or?
May 9th.
May 9th. Any bets on who's, who's going to get more applications, the youth committee or the commissioner? But, yeah, hopefully, we'll, hopefully we'll get a lot for both, so that'd be nice.
I think it's quite a long list for commissioners, though.
Well, there are nine, there are nine, technically, there are nine openings, but they're incumbents, of course, but, yeah. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. None over here? Nope. Okay, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Let's start with Councilmember Chavez.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I don't really have anything other than a reminder of this Friday, we're taking, those of you who want, a tour of the sports complex at Temple City High School. If you forget about that.
Is it at 5?
3 o'clock.
3?
Yeah, I think we're supposed to meet at the field, I think, or the parking lot next to the field. I believe it's at 3 o'clock on Friday, so if anybody's interested, I don't know, I shouldn't say it's not open to the public, but by invitation only, but it'll be interesting, but getting closer, so. And let's see, it's been kind of quiet the last couple of weeks. Again, congratulations to Cindy Vance for Older American of the Year.
What a lovely event that was.
Nice event last, last Saturday, I believe it was.
Yes.
It was a very nice event, and congratulations, sir, and best of health. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chen?
Yes, so I attended through my service on the Metro San Diego Valley Service Sector, a public hearing they had regarding the foothill extension that's going to Glendora, San Dimas, Laverne, Pomona, Claremont, Moncler. Lots of exciting things happening on that east end of the Gold Line, that's just to the north of us. On the transportation side, I just want to thank again Mayor Sternquist. Since I came on board the city council, not only has she kind of provided me this guidance and also my service on the Foothill Transit Board as well, I was very, very excited to learn that Foothill Transit not only had joined the LJPIA, which our former mayor Chavez has long served on the executive board, but Foothill Transit, in its role, and as a new member and with Mayor Sternquist is under her leadership, a longtime leadership on the executive board, also was appointed to the executive board, so congratulations.
I forgot all about that. Thank you for, time goes by fast, and I was there, too.
You were there?
So thank you for, I think we're, thank, I want to thank Mayor Sternquist for her guidance, for her leadership and her, regionally, she's regarded as a leader, and especially in transportation issue, and this appointment, I think, definitely cements that, so want to thank her for all her work in that area. I attended a, well, this is for my son, who's part of the Temple City National Little League, but it was such a nice community event where the coaches got together celebration, in celebration of Jackie Robinson. It was a really nice event that the coaches put on. It's a tradition annually, year after year, and it was just a really fun community event. And, yep, that's all I have.
No invitation?
Y'all make sure they do a better job doing that, other than just the parents.
You said that last year. You said that last year.
You said it Michael, they do-
They do it at the-
No, at Millham.
Oh, okay. Nice.
Good.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Yu?
Nothing more, just wishing everybody happy Easter.
Yeah, happy Easter.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I echo Councilmember Chavez's comment on congratulating Cindy Vance on the, on being our Older American of the Year. It was a very nice event, large showing, and I especially liked Lucy Liu's heartfelt comments for being the nominee, or nominator, not nominee, nominator. So it was very touching and, you know, not, not to rehash what I said during the day, but for, for me, at least, having worked with Cindy on the general plan advisory committee and having known her for that many years, it was, it was a very heartfelt and touching moment, so I, I think she, she absolutely deserves it, so. And looking forward to the sports complex tour, even just driving by, you could see they're making incredible progress, so our understanding from the school district is they, they want to have it in, in a condition so that they could have the graduation, right, for, for this year, so that, that's very exciting. And also, I think Neighborhood Watch is this Thursday, right?
Thank you, I forgot about that.
Is it Cloverly?
It is Cloverly, yes, sir.
Cloverly Elementary?
Thank you for reminding.
Yeah, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to say that Cindy Vance is still walking on water regarding that celebration. It's every, she calls me almost every day just to tell me she still can't believe how wonderful it was, and, and it's just truly heartfelt, and the staff did an amazing job. I mean, from the decorations to the food to, you know, her sign that is coveted on her front yard saying Older American of, you know, 2024, 25, what year are we?
2025.
2025, but she is just really thrilled, so thank you to council for supporting her and staff. It was great. And I think with that, I'd like to adjourn-
Hold on, I'm sorry, I forgot one item, if you don't mind. I know we had a lot of talk lately about the e-bikes and, in the community and stuff like that. It looks like the youth committee is going to take on that issue and, and talk with students at the high school, get their feedback, and perhaps make a presentation to the council on that issue before the end of their term. So more to follow on that, but I'm glad, we had, we had proposed that to them at our last meeting, and a couple of the members have decided to, to go further with it. They're going to be at the Neighborhood Watch on Thursday, and hopefully more to follow.
On that note, if I may, one more thing, sorry. I know, I wanted to thank, thank the city manager and our public safety staff, I think, on, following Mayor Chavez's note about the e-bike. I saw the social media post, understand that day was a very busy day for the sheriffs, but not only have the major crimes unit, but also the traffic services detail that came, and that was the social media post that was posted. I happen to recognize the deputy, I worked with him many, many years, and he actually shared with me that e-bike was capable of traveling at 60 miles per hour, and based on the person who was cited, there's at least seven other students that had that same exact model at Temple City High-
That's the one they said, right?
Was that modified, or is that, just they came going that fast?
Well, I'm not too sure, but, well, Deputy Lamb confirmed the individual that was in the, that was in the photo, and I was able to reach out to him, and he, that was his quick response to me after I thanked him for coming as part of the county's traffic services detail to, to help with our enforcement. So again, the sheriff's department's a great, great resource when you can leverage the expertise of these specialized units to come into our city to supplement our efforts. So again, the special assignment team, as well as our city manager, thank you for your diligent work and always making these specialized assignment teams feel that they're invited to work in our city.
They're welcome, anytime.
Anytime. All right. Additional comments from the public? None? Okay, closed public comment, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of three individuals and the, hold on a second. First one is, I would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Franca Scorsoni, is it Scorsoni? Scorsoni, Barbara DeRazio, and Jake Fertile. Franca was an integral part of the Historical Society and Women's Club for many years. In addition to being a member of the Chameleon Festival Committee, she was also active with the Italian Catholic Federation at St. Luke's. She was a dedicated behind-the-scenes worker everyone could count on. Barbara was a beloved and active member of the community. She worked in local schools as an instructional aide while raising three daughters, all of whom attended Temple City Schools. Barbara was known for her vibrant community spirit, helping decorate homes during CIF soccer playoffs, volunteering at school events like the Longdigan Carnival, and supporting her grandchildren through school. One of her most meaningful contributions was organizing a local World War II veterans group, where she brought joy and connection to veterans with monthly breakfasts and homemade treats. Jake attended Emperor Elementary School, Oak Avenue Intermediate School, and Temple City High School, where he was involved in music and sports. He was also heavily involved in the performance arts, in the performing arts, as well as playing baseball, football, and throwing shot put. He walked in the Chameleon Parade as a child and marched in the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade twice, once as a Tournament of Roses Herald Tromperter, and once with the Pride of Temple City marching band. Jake was a band and choir director with Monrovia High School. Jake was known for his big smile, warm heart, and sense of humor, and we all remember him as Santa last December. Frank, Barbara, and Jake will be missed by all who knew and loved them. May they rest in peace. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.